We're going to move forward, we're going to open back up our meeting, we finished our executive session, we're going to move right now to public speak item four. And we're going to go through the individuals that are on and allow them to speak. The first one would be Brian Briggs. Would you like to say anything in public speak?
Oh, yes. How's it going Jeff? Pretty good. So I was gonna ask on behalf of myself and the Andover Democratic Town Committee that we put a nonbiting petition on the ballot asking if we can change the elections to November. Due to low turnout, like the numbers here are really low. And this year we've had a big turnout. So some of the members here in town, some of the voters aren't voting. So we would like to, you know, put that on the ballot and see if people are interested in it. And then if that's the only way, otherwise, I don't know if you guys can just change it. It wouldn't save us money and it would have more people turn out.
Okay, alright, thank you.
But also I have another thing, that's okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, um, I was reading the town ordinances and I'm not sure if this is right, but it looks like we're supposed to have an an ethics commission that was way back in, I don't know, it says 2006, 2005, that Andover's supposed to have an ethics commission. And I think that's really important because of, you know, the things that's happened in the past and like some of the stuff that you were talking about earlier, probably in the exec, in the executive meeting, could have been maybe handled a little bit differently and a lot faster with less cost to the town. And also it would make sure like people aren't, you know, unethical and all that. So I think that would be a good idea to enforce that.
Okay. Alright, Kathy and Mike Palazzi. Do you guys have anything you want to add? You're good? Okay, you're still on mute, so give me a thumbs up. Good. Diane? You're good? Nothing to us?
I'm good, nothing.
Anne Kremet? You're good? Alright. I don't know who Jay is. Does anyone know who Jay is?
Public Works Director.
Alright, Public Works Director. Jay, would you like to bring anything to public speak?
He's still connecting. I don't think he can hear you.
Elaine Buchart and Don Keener?
Nope, we're all set.
Alright, Joanne Eber?
Thanks.
Okay, Diane Choquet?
I'm all set.
Okay, Amanda, have I missed anyone?
I think you got everyone covered.
Okay, alright, so let's go on to item five additions and deletions to the agenda. Do any of the other members of the Board of Selectmen have any items they want to add or delete?
Jeff, I would make a suggestion that you move item 11A to 11H. And do budget discussion at the very last, because that's not really the priority of this meeting.
Okay, that's... I mean, we can leave it with A because I don't, does any, do any of the other members of the Board of Selectmen really want to get into any specifics on the budget in tonight's meeting? I mean, we have another scheduled meeting.
Right.
Right, and we need to reschedule another meeting because of the issues that occurred on Monday, so let's leave it at A because we're going to move right through it.
Understood.
Alright, is there anything else? Oh, okay. We have Boards and Commission Presentation. The Board of Selectmen, Board of Education, Combined Finance Department Committee, Finance Director Interviews, Eric?
So, real quick, real quick, Eric, that was not Jay from Public Works, just so we're clear.
Oops, okay.
He says DP, DPW when it's connected. I just checked with him, that's not him, so.
Okay.
Amanda, can you kick that individual out? I mean, are they even connected to the audio? Do we have any understanding or what there?
It looks like they're trying to connect, but they may not have audio on their device. So we can always leave them for now.
We can, we can let it sit there. Okay, so Eric, the Finance Department Committee?
Okay, so again, we interviewed another three candidates. We had a total of like six more, seven more inquiries. But most of them weren't willing to actually put in an application. We did get four applications. Or five applications, of which three people were even remotely qualified. We did interview three individuals. Of the group, we were all pretty unanimous that the only person we would consider was a woman named Sherri Holmes. She's a resident of Portland. We have started the conversation with her about what, you know, about the job position. There's no final agreement. Val is going to get back to the combined commission that was interviewing on what we think the final conditions are. You know, I suspect we're going to end up higher on salary than we want. The good news with her is she is actively looking to taper back. She is probably three years away from retirement and we talked a bit about, because, I mean, one of the concerns by the Board and myself was the fact that, you know, in a couple of years or in a year and a half, when we are through with the software transition, you know, there's a strong potential that this job does not need to stay at, you know, anywhere close to full time. So this employee would very definitely consider going down to a part-time position within the next couple of years. So that's basically where we're at with that. There's no final agreement that I know of at this point. You know, we were going to put together a contract and then discuss it with everybody that's on the combined commission. So that's kind of where we're at.
Okay. 6B Economic Development Commission? Elaine, I believe.
Yep. Yep, hi. The welcome to Andover signs that we would like funding for, I had put in for last year. And didn't get anything. I mean, basically, I went through CIP and Board of Selectmen and CIP put it through, but then I believe it was the Selectmen that, that said, no, not this year, we can't do it. The Hartford Foundation for Public Giving went ahead and gave the community funds out to all the towns that they serve, and I know Diane is part of that, trying to, and they're going to be soon asking for people for projects for the community fund to fund. And, and I was going to go through that. But, I mean, the reality is I should ask the town again. If we can get some kind of support, maybe go halves, maybe 5,000 for one sign from the town, 5,000 for the other sign with the community fund. But, so that's why I'm going ahead and presenting it one more time. We would like these nice welcome to Andover signs or any welcome to Andover signs. And so we're looking for funding.
Elaine, quick question, does this include, I don't remember, I apologize from last year, we get so much stuff that comes across. Does this include the installation of the sign or any of the expected costs to try to light them or place them or anything, or is this just sign and the, and the, the cover, I think there was a covering over it, right, or something, like a little roof or something?
There's a, yeah, there's a little roof. You've got the pictures there. They've got, I mean, the person who designed that sign basically came out, looked at our covered bridge and replicated it in a welcome to Andover sign with the roof and the metal green roof and then the metal nailed placarding on the bottom and then the wood. He was basically replicating it so that it really fit in with the covered bridge. But it, it should include installation, but the reality is I didn't go any further to get all of the final details because I haven't been able to secure any kind of funding to do it.
So, so, okay, but so this $10,000 number?
I don't know.
It does not?
I'll ask him, yeah. I'll, I'll call Art and find out.
I'm just guessing now that, I'm guessing that it doesn't, if, even if it includes that, it might not include the lighting that you may need or?
I know it doesn't include lighting. It didn't, yeah.
Okay, just as a, just as a other side of this, have we dealt with Eric as to where we would put them?
No. Once again, no funding. You know, nothing has been, it's going to be on Route 6. It's going to be on either side of the town on Route 6, but specifically where has not been picked out or determined.
Well, given that Route 6 is a state road, we should probably find out what the limitations are on that.
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, a lot of towns have their signs out there and stuff, and so I would call around and talk to the different towns about what kind of permissions, right of ways that have to be done.
We'd probably reach out to our district rep for the, for the state that controls Route 6. That's probably the appropriate place.
Sure.
She might, Elaine, you might be right. You might ask Bolton, because I know they put up signs recently. They're not huge, but they are. I don't think Coventry has anything on Route 6. I think Coventry focuses on 32 or whatever, but.
Forty, yeah, 44 and 32.
But it would be interesting to sit there and see, you know, you would want to put them somewhere closer to the town line and be interesting to sit there.
Oh, yeah. It would be, yeah, it wouldn't be right at the town line. That doesn't make any sense. It would be kind of closer to the center.
Find out that, but we, we will consider it. I can't sit there and say with what's coming down the road this year that will actually do it, but we should figure out a way to get this done somehow.
Right.
Well, something similar to it done somehow. I think the rest of the Board will also be in agreement that it would be.
Eric, should we be looking for, isn't there a flat rate for electrical service on certain things for towns? Like, so if we just want to, we want to light that sign, we have to pay for a meter or is it a flat rate for lighting or what is it?
Depending on what kind of lighting it is, I mean, for regular street lighting, it's just a per fixture price. In terms of decorative lighting, I don't know.
And I know I, you know, I would consider solar lighting, you know, so that there's no need for any kind of electrical hookup.
Solar lighting generally without a battery setup won't last the night. But it is an idea. I've tried a bunch of different things on my own driveway, just experimenting and it's more complicated than it seems, to be honest with you, so.
Yeah.
I'm just, and also I'm just trying to think about, as a town, every now and we talk about things like that, when we start about solar or batteries and all that, it's just one more thing to maintain. As a town, we try to make things as easy as possible sometimes, and there is a cost to that, I realize, but having somebody who's going to go check on that, who's going to check the batteries, who's going, you know, so, you know.
Yeah.
Eric is going to find out.
Thing.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think that the other towns are lit, Adrian.
I know, so why shouldn't we stand out? Spend the money on a sign, let's stand out a little.
When you go by with your?
All of this, all of this is great. We should actually do the research to sit there and determine what it is, because you know, Adrian's not wrong on that one, because it is difficult to change batteries and to deal with all that.
It is. Listen, I will make a statement right now. I have already volunteered to help with the gazebo refurbishment this year and to organize that. If the money does not end up in this year, I will, I will put the signs on my next year's project list. So gazebo's on the 21, 22, I'll, I'll put the sign on 22, 23 and I'll take care of that.
Okay, please put that in the minutes.
Sure thing.
You absolutely can. I have no problem being held accountable to that.
So Adrian's going to build the signs?
Not this year. I've got to do the gazebo this year, but if you don't get the money this year and Hartford won't kick in, I will definitely take care of the signs. You've got, town has to pay for the materials and I will, I'll probably have Public Works put in the, the concrete and I'll take care of the building.
Oh, thank you very much for that.
Thanks, Adrian.
Elaine, that was well.
Well, you're helping too, Scott, you just don't know it yet.
And I'm sure he's rugged and wrote me in too, so.
I'm sure there'll be some fundraising I'll be required to deal with. Let's see, now we're moving on to item seven, appointments. Eric, no appointments, right?
None that I know of.
Number eight?
Just for the record, at some point, the Beautification Commission will give me a roster and will appoint a new Beautification Commission. I asked for that, I did not get it yet. Hopefully at the next meeting, we'll appoint a Beautification Commission, if you so choose.
We have, we have seen the roster though.
They wanted to finalize it. Kathy wanted to finalize it, which is fine. They, they're not going to do anything in the middle of February with all the snow we have in the ground. We're not worried about beautification at this point.
Snow looks nice.
Yeah, snow looks beautiful. Alright, resignations. 8A, Cynthia Murray has resigned from the Andover Board of Education. I think that's all that needs to be said there. Item nine, unless, unless someone would like to speak to that directly. Anyone? No? Okay, item nine, the Town Administrator's Report.
Okay, so once again, I'm going to share my screen and then only go over the things that have changed since the last time. Tell me if that works and you can see it. I'll make it bigger in just a second. Okay, so at this point, we're up to 140 positive cases of COVID in town. However, the big spikes that we experienced in the past, we're definitely on the downswing and the average case infection is down to about 35. It got as high as 78 at one point, so we're definitely doing better. And we're mirroring the state and the nation as a whole, which is good. So I also wanted to say that as of February 3rd, the last time I had solid data on it, 46% of Andover seniors had had at least their first vaccine shot. I think those numbers are better now. It's not as good as a lot of the other communities and I've asked Roberta to reach back out. You know, in addition to Kathy Palazzi and start talking to people and play that up as much as possible. We had a narrow window where town employees were able to have me put them on VAMs if they were over 65. And those that took advantage of it were able to get, you know, shots scheduled before, as of tomorrow, everybody over 65 is eligible, so you can sign yourself up on VAMs.
Now, before you move on there, you know, being 1/4th out of 169 towns is not good enough. So, you know, all of this, I'm assuming is done by internet, correct?
Correct.
Can we, can we really make an outreach to all these seniors and get them signed up? Somehow and get them on buses or whatever we need to, to get them vaccinated if they agree to?
I mean, the, the problem is not transportation. We've said flat out, we will provide senior transportation to anybody that needs a vaccine shot wherever they get scheduled within the state. It's really getting people, but what we can't do is we cannot physically sign people up. Like, we cannot go into VAMs and put individuals in in VAMs. Other than town employees, I can do that, but I can't do it for everybody. You know, so the, the state has, you know, recently added a ton more time and people on their help lines, because before it was just ridiculous. You'd call, you'd spend 45 minutes on hold and then they'd, you know, tell you to call back later and then you'd get a pre-recorded message saying call back the next time they're open. So they've, like, more than quadrupled the number of people on the lines. But it's difficult and, you know, a lot of the people that are 75 and older are not that tech savvy and it is a problem.
Well, how can we help? How can we help this along then?
If they're not tech savvy, what can we do to get the technology to them or help them navigate it?
I mean, the reality is they've got to sit on the phone, you know, and they've got to call in and schedule the appointment that way.
You cannot do it on the internet?
What?
You cannot do it on the internet? I thought people were doing these appointments.
You can very def, they can very definitely do it on the internet, but if people don't have an internet connection and they don't have an email address, you know, there's no way, you know, there's no other way to do it other than, you know, in other words, we're not going to go in and create an email address for every single person over 65. Sign them up and then schedule their appointment and then somehow get their information to them. It just, I don't really see that as being practical. We just don't have the resources to do that.
Alright, we got to think about that.
I have had a couple of conversations with both Andy Tierney and Greg Lowery. They both have some suggestions regarding the RAM budget. My suggestion is I pawn that conversation off on Mr. McGuire. You know, since that's not really necessarily appropriate for me as the administrator. I'll tell you what Greg is proposing is that we all request that RAM reduces their capital expenses by half a million this year. Because next year, when the bond gets, the payment on the bond goes down by about a million and a half, then they'll be more capable of funding capital requests. So if you all collectively have a message for them, I'd be happy to pass it on, or if you want to deal with them directly, Jeff, that's certainly up to you.
As far as I'm concerned, if this, you know, I, I need to deal with the superintendent directly. I, I will, I have planned on doing that because as I will tell, I told the members of this board and I'll tell anybody, we have to focus on per student spending rather than, you know, a total number. But if this board wants to sit there and make a global statement to the RAM board, we have no problem supporting that. So, we can talk about that later. You continue on your.
Yeah, the other thing I would say is that Scott Leslie, the, the superintendent or the acting superintendent has offered to, you know, attend whatever the budget meeting, either the Board of Selectmen or the Board of Ed or a combined, or not Board of Ed, Board of Finance or a combined meeting to discuss the budget. So what I was going to suggest is that we invite him to the next budget meeting, if you would like that. And then I would also invite the Board of Finance, or if you have another time or plan, I would relay that to him.
I mean, Jeff said to table it till later, but given that they're in budget workshops now and stuff, would it make sense that we pass a motion in support of that statement? And ask a letter to be drafted for us that we can do our electronic signature or get together and sign if we need to, you know?
That's fine. What did you want it to say, Adrian?
And I want to basically support that statement that the, you know, that the, the RAM Board of Ed consider reducing their capital expenses by, you know, a half a million dollars and defer those expenses or, or the request for those expenses until next year when the bond has been reduced.
I would second that. I would support that.
Do we want to make any, any additional global statement to sit there and tell the Board? I mean, you know, based upon the numbers that I have seen and I've been given, their per student spending is going through the roof.
Yeah, I mean, I kind of looked at that too and I'm trying to pin down if it's, if it's a special ed issue, because there seems to be a little more special ed in that budget than there has been in the past. I shouldn't say.
So, I know there's been some discussion as to a special meeting with the Board of Finance. I think maybe what we do is we request Scott to come to that meeting. So, I want to ask him to come to two meetings, because I wouldn't mind having him participate like Valerie did in a budget workshop to get some better understanding of where his numbers are, but.
Then. I could probably ask him to be at the next budget workshop if that's what you want.
Then let's do it.
That would be fantastic. Then can we, can we send out something to the Board of Finance members that if they would like to join that for that portion of the meeting?
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Let's do that.
Is that okay with everybody else?
Yes, please.
I will make that happen. I'll let him know.
Thank you.
Okay, the second thing related to budget that I just threw in my reports, there was no other clean way to do it, is the Governor Lamont released his two-year proposed state budget. His budget level funds ECS, level funds all town funding sources that we get. I looked at it, you know, line by line and it's basically, his proposal is pay him the same as last year. The only difference is he's proposing that the, of that next federal coronavirus relief money that the state got, the federal government, the town, town of Andover's share would be somewhere around $29,000 in the next budget. But there's no, no details about what that is or how it's spent or how it's allotted or anything else. So that's all I know at this point from his budget. Most of you know by now that Daryl, the resident state trooper, has been reassigned to Hebron. His replacement for, at least temporarily, is named Chris Farrar. I met him a couple of times. He's a nice guy. I sent him out today to do a wellness check on a elderly resident. So Daryl had been showing him around. You know, like going over what all the issues were in the town of Andover. So if anybody wants his email, I'd be willing to pass that along, you know, if you want.
That'd be helpful.
Yeah, can you send it to all of us, please?
Yep. Okay, Scott Yeoman's completed the course for the burning official. And one of the things that I would question for the Board is in the past, we have not charged individuals for burning permits. But that was because we made it an additional responsibility for the Public Works Director. Which is kind of dumb, because he's got too many other things on his plate. So we found one, potentially two guys in the fire department willing to do it. But it's a time suck, because they got to go out and, you know, wade in on all these things. So what I would suggest is that he be compensated and we just put in a permit fee for anybody applying for a burn permit and that.
So what, we're taking like 25 bucks, something like that?
I would say somewhere between 30 and 50, because we're certainly not trying to encourage people to burn.
How many burning requests do you have annually?
Six to eight, not a lot.
Eight, 50 bucks, let's go.
I think if you go too high, you're gonna, people are just going to do it without a permit and try to sneak through. I think I'd rather see it at a lower number that encourages them to make the call so that we know what they're doing and they don't get into trouble.
Yeah.
Yep, as long as they don't make it too low, that it's not worth the guy's while to drive out and do all the paperwork.
25 bucks would cover it, no? It's not going to take more than an hour, right?
Yeah, it's 20, it's $25 an hour, right?
Alright, what do we need to do to pass that permit?
I would, I would make, I would make a motion that we institute a burning permit fee of $25 to be paid to the town and then to, we will recompensate the burning official accordingly.
Wouldn't the burning official have to go a couple of times, one to see the pile or whatever they're burning and then one other one see it at the end of its burn?
No, generally they're going to go inspect the area, make sure it meets, and unless there's a problem, they most likely will not be back.
Eric, what's your, what's the, what, do you know anything about this burning stuff?
So I did talk to Eddie. Eddie usually went out and looked at the pile. So I did talk to Eddie. E- Eddie usually went out and looked at the pile before it was burnt. Unless it was one of his regulars and he knew exactly where it was going. Um, and he usually went out on the day they were actually doing the burden, which means they got a call and he's got to drive back out and look at it.
I would say, I, 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 I don't mean to, to contradict Eddie, given he can't defend himself at this point, but. I didn't find that to be the case, so.
Okay.
Most people will not, not, don't necessarily burn during the week either, so.
Well, if, if, what, there's a, if there's a completed course, I would think that you would be able to find out exactly how long, how much. Time it's going to be scheduled for each burn. And then you could base that more clearly on what really is needed.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna be more than, it's not gonna be more than twenty-five bucks, uh, you know? If it's, and I would say if it's a large pot, you know, if it's a large pile and, and there's an exi- additional visit required. For whatever reason, that they would be charged again for another visit.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, is, is somebody seconding that motion? Because I know we got into the questions right away.
I'll just bring you back a draft for the next meeting.
Yeah, just re- and just maybe reach out to those two guys and see how they feel about that number.
Yeah, fi- find out about it, Eric.
Is that okay, Eric?
Yeah, Scott said between thirty and fifty, he thought was appropriate.
I don't, I, I'd be okay with thirty. If you go higher than that, you're gonna have an issue. Personally.
Yeah, probably will.
Okay.
What's, so, if, if, maybe run thirty by them then. Come back with a draft, we'll vote on it.
Okay, fair enough. So, the other thing that we talked about, or I put briefly in the, uh, original. Um, administrators' report is we did, uh, blow up our fifth F-five-fifty. Uh, Mason Dump Truck, um, which is a two thousand eight truck. Um, that was slated on our CIP, uh, request to be replaced next year. Um, when it would be basically fourteen years old. Um, what happened is we scored or we, uh. The things kind of melted, one of the pistons, um, which is apparently an issue with that. Uh, diesel if it's idled too long. Um, apparently they're recommending that public works departments actually go to gas vehicles from diesel. Give up the extra torque, um, because they're having problems with the diesel engines, you know, in that environment.
Um, are, is it not standard issue or is it not standard policy to put? You know, auto, auto time down on these things so they don't idle more than a certain number of minutes before shutting themselves down?
I don't know. That's not a question I can answer.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought there was a state law saying they couldn't idle more than five minutes.
Well, it's not a state law. Different towns have ordinances about it. There's no state law on it. But it's just good, good practice to put an auto shut off, you know? Basically, if it idles more than twenty minutes, I mean, some, some companies will dial it down so it's ten minutes. It just automatically shuts off.
Can I ask, uh, Eric, that truck, who, whi- which route was it on, which, who was driving it?
I don't, doesn't matter, does it?
It does, it does for me, because I wanna, I wanna know.
I, I actually don't know, um. I don't think it was during a snowstorm. Um, I don't think it was, was actively being used.
If, if procedures call for those vehicles to only idle at a certain time, we should figure out a way so as to not make that happen. My, my request was if it was a newer person, it could, it could have happened because they were unaware of that and. Not that you can blame them, but. We should put.
Jeff, this, yeah, but Jeff, this isn't a one-time thing. This is probably something that happened over years of it sitting idling. And I remember there was an issue with this. Our guys went to, um, our guys went to Hebron to get breakfast one day. And we actually got an email about it saying, you know, why are these trucks idling over in Hebron while they're in eating? They just left them out in the parking lot idling. So. Remember that?
I do.
Okay, so Eric, if we order the truck, see if we can get a, uh, just a su- a shutdown, you know? I know in some of them, you can actually program it into the logic, you know?
So, so what are you, what are you guys suggesting here? We're gonna buy another truck?
So here's what I'm saying, you know, we looked at it and said, what is the cost of re-engining that stupid thing? And the reality is it's somewhere around eighteen thousand dollars. Um, to put a new motor in it, that's if nothing goes wrong with the swap. Um, you know, and putting that much money in a thirteen-year-old vehicle. That was kind of slated to be replaced in about a year, um, doesn't make sense to me. Um, we're still gonna look at what the possibility of buying a used diesel motor is before we commit to buying a new one. Um, you know, and we've got a bunch more homework to do. We've only. You know, we've only known about it for three days at this point, so. So, I'm not recommending any course of action at this point. I'm just letting you know. Kind of what we're looking at and what we're thinking. Um, we found the local Ford dealer has one. That basically, that's on the lot now. It's white, not green, so not ideal, but nothing, not a deal breaker. Um, that would be with a V plow would be about fifty-seven thousand. Um, we also looked at Sourcewell, which is the governing, the government contracting site. We can buy it from Sourcewell, um, and it would be just a little bit more than that. But that would be for a two thousand twenty-two model year. Um, but at this point, uncertain when we would actually be able to get it. We would order it now. But how long it takes it to them to deliver it is problematic, and we don't have a firm estimate for that.
How much do you need this vehicle?
Uh. I mean, we only have, without that, we only have one small vehicle, or a crew of four. Um, so that's not a doable. You know, we really need three small trucks, not two, but we can live with two. Um, I don't think we can live with one. You know, and I don't want to put wear and tear on the big trucks just to, you know, try to get away with one vehicle. So the, the question becomes, how do we actually fund this thing? Um, we do have some pools of money. I was starting to look at it today as to where we could potentially take money. Um, we do have some money remaining in the capital equipment fund. We have about twenty-three thousand dollar balance on that right now. Um, we have, we can potentially repurpose some of the second allotment of COVID relief money that we've gotten. Theoretically, we could take about twenty thousand dollars out of that. We can spend money from Town Aid Road and we could potentially spend it from contingency. And I'm not saying, I'm not making any recommendations at this point. I'm just saying that, you know, it is possible to fund it at this point. Um, but we, we still got a bunch of homework, uh, to do. Um, we need to explore whether we can get a lower-cost repower situation first with the used engine. You know, and then look at other potential sources, see who else has them on the lots and what they would go for. Um, because if we send out to get one of these built, uh, we're gonna be waiting a long time. Um, so that's that. The second thing is, we got a bunch of old equipment that we're just flat out not gonna use. Um, and most of it's been sitting around a long time. Um, the first is the old sweeper. Since we replaced the sweeper, there's absolutely no reason. To maintain the old one, because we have to spend a fair bit of time fixing it back up to put it back on the road this year. So my suggestion is that we auction off the sweeper. Um, we also have a really old rear sander unit. Um, that was purchased for a, a previous. Version of the Mason Dump Truck that's a little bigger than the one we have now. It's actually really too heavy to go on the back of our little Mason Dump, and it doesn't really work on the big units. So, we have no use for that. It could be auctioned. We also have a tilting mixer. We ha- we have another mixer. It's a really old one. There's no reason to hold on to that. And if we do end up buying another vehicle, um, we ought to pursue auctioning off the existing F-five-fifty. Because the frame itself's in pretty good shape, uh, and the dump body is okay, and it does have a V plow. So we'll get some money for it. So we ought to consider that. And there's also, somewhere along the line, we got a free old single-axle military trailer that's been sitting in the back of the, the facility. Collecting dust that hasn't been out of there in at least ten years. So we ought to get rid of that also. And the last thing is, um, Jay has been making them religiously go through their parts bin and understand what they have. We have a ton of old spare parts for equipment that we haven't owned in a while. Some of it's for our old seven-ten backhoe, and some's for one of our old dozers. And we don't have either of those pieces of equipment. Um, we're gonna trade all that, give all that stuff back to the dealer. They will pay us for it. They will give us a credit. Um, you know, minus a restocking fee. So that, I wanted to be aware, and I did make a motion if you wanted to. It's probably cleanest that the Board of Selectmen agree to send the stuff to surplus. If that's what you want to do. Didn't anybody have any questions on that?
No. Um, uh, we, I know we talked about it in the past. Are we looking at finally getting a parts wall, like a bolt wall down there and stuff?
Jay's looking into that. That's one of the tasks I assigned him.
As long as he makes a decision, if he were gonna do it, we probably want to make a decision just before summer. Because that's when most places do the, the restock orders, you know?
Yep.
And, you know, the one, the one person I know that we had talked to and gotten, you know. Service from had offered to, uh, you know, basically buy us in at, at their rate. To, for the initial purchase of the wall.
Wasn't that supposed to be done last year?
Yeah, I thought we were working on it last year. It doesn't seem like.
What happened to it last year? What, why didn't it get done? Paid for and everything?
It's, it's in this year's budget. We have it budgeted for this year.
So we can do it.
What?
So it can be done.
It can be done in this budget year.
Okay.
Um.
And has anyone checked, checked about a, a used motor for the F-five-fifty?
He's checking on it.
Not yet, but that's clearly something we're gonna do prior to.
Uh, we gave him some information this afternoon, you know, about maybe reaching out to Koots. And Koots should also be able to give us a price as to what we may be able to fetch for the, for the other one if we do just need to sell it, so.
Right. I mean, all I'm telling you at this point is that it's a problem. We're working on it. I can't tell you what the final solution is. Um, but we got a lot more data we gotta figure out before we're ready to make it any kind of decision.
But, and what is the issue with all the idling? Why is it idling all the time?
That's just a habit a lot of guys do with diesels, because.
Yeah.
They don't pursue, they don't consume a lot of.
I know all that, Eric, I, Adrian, but why would someone go have a breakfast and keep their motor running?
Well, that's, that's a different conversation.
Or why, why would they sit around, I don't think you shut the thing off. What's going on here that this is happening? I mean, I have diesels myself, but I don't let them run, I shut them off. So I'm, I'm just curious about that.
I mean, I'm not sitting in the vehicle. I, I mean, I can't tell you the history of the vehicle, um, you know.
And if they're saying that that's the problem, and now it's blown up, so, you know, I.
I would gather that our guys did not know it was a problem. I don't think it's something they did. You know, in general, it's not an issue for diesels. It happens a lot because diesels take forever to warm back up. Um, you know, and it's, you know, they, whether they're running the air conditioning in the summer or the heat in the winter, you know, there's a lot of reasons why guys do it. Whether it's a good, good, bad, or other.
It, I, I think that that was the case, Adrian, in the, you know, sixties or seventies or something, but we're talking about new vehicles that. You know, can start and run and idle, you know, for a period of time and you shut them off.
I.
Not, we're not talking about the fifties here.
I, I don't disagree with you, but having, being around these trucks all day and owning one myself, I can tell you that it's still a problem with people. You know, old habits die hard. That's simple. And that's why, you know, you can put, uh. You can put a programmer in that automatically shuts down the vehicle. That's why these things exist.
Mm-hmm.
So, it bypasses that, so if they want to keep it running, they gotta go back out every ten minutes and hit the button, you know? So.
Okay, so let's go back to these parts. So the, the, the surplus materials, um. Is Jay, has Jay reviewed all these, or is Jay going to be the one that evaluates all this and tells us what we're gonna do? And what we're gonna be able to get for these, these parts that we've paid for with tax dollars previously?
So, Jay gave me a list of everything which you're looking at right there. That he felt was appropriate to go to surplus, because it didn't have any value to them as a public works. And they were more valuable than what you would just get for scrap metal. So his suggestion would be to approach Ritchie Brothers through their government auction, online auction service. Or GovDeals, um, you know, and start putting these things out to auction and see what you get.
Look, let me know when that single-axle trailer comes up. I want in.
Alright.
Adrian, you got enough room at, on your property for another piece of equipment?
I know, it is getting a little ugly, ain't it?
Okay, uh, Eric, do you have anything else?
Nope, that's it for me for my report.
Um, do any of the members want to ask Eric any additional questions related to what? He brought to us? It is, I'll, I'll ask one. Is, uh, is, uh, Trooper Ferreira, uh, local?
Uh, I think he lives in Colchester, so not super local.
Okay.
Is that tilting mixer gas or electric?
I don't know.
Might be interesting that, too. Look it up, Muller, six S, tilting mixer.
Let's get the Ethics Commission in right now. And, and Eric, just as a side note, I mean, uh, we, we do need as a community to try to figure out a, to, a, a way. A better way to assist our, our, uh, senior community on getting vaccinated.
Right, I.
I don't care if I need to volunteer to try to sit there and bring an iPad to their door to, then. We've got to figure out a way. So if you can, if you find out that there's a way and you need volunteers, we need to, they need to get vaccinated.
Are they, are, are, do we know, Eric? What population of our seniors are signed up for like that emergency system that we send out or our alerts? Is there, can we put together like a message, when, when we do figure out how we're gonna help them?
To ask them if they need help in some way?
Yeah, yeah. Just a message, you know, a phone message. I don't know how many of them are signed up, but.
Maybe they should, should all be signed up.
I, I'm talking about that, um, that blast, you know, that blast that we use, Scott.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
So the blast, the blast that we got today.
Maybe all the seniors should be signed up for that.
Right, but, um, how do we?
You can't make somebody sign up for something they don't want to sign up for.
Why not?
Stop. Well, what do we do? Once we, once we figure out how we can help them, do we send them a mailing? Can we? How do we let them know that we're, we want to help them?
I, I think we, in general, don't we have a list? I mean, Roberta has a list of everybody that's interacting on a regular basis. We call people on a regular basis, you know?
So, we went through the voter rolls, not we, I'm using the royal we, as in Mrs. Pelosi, uh, and Roberta. And got a list of all the seniors and called every senior that's over the age of seventy-five. And inquired and gave them personally the information on how to sign up. So the problem is not getting them the information. The problem is actually getting them to do it. Um, and the fact that, let's be honest, a significant fraction of them don't want to do it, because, you know, the virus is a hoax and, you know.
Well, instead of, instead of telling them how to sign up, can we help them sign up? Can we have somebody with a laptop that signs them up and then forwards them the information? So they know where and when they have to go and offers them a ride if we need to?
Uh, li- listen, Eric, let's not even do. Uh, li- listen, Eric, let's not even do that. If, if that's the case, Adrian, Adrian's not wrong. But what I, what I would ask is let's make a phone call to all of, we, we can't. I mean, how many people are we talking about? What is the number? 750, 500?
No.
No, 50.
Yeah, like 130, something like that.
That's over 65, right?
No, that's over 70.
Oh my lord.
Yeah.
Okay.
We, so we just need like 20 miles.
Let's get a list and check them off. If they, if they say they're not going to get vaccinated, fine, they're not going to get vaccinated. If they're gonna get vaccinated and they want to get vaccinated, they need assistance to get vaccinated, let's help them. I mean, and I'm not saying you, Eric, I'm, I will volunteer my time to help them do that.
Joanne Hebert just hopped in the chat. She's willing to offer. I mean, we can get people to help with this. I, my neighbor across the street's in her seventies. She'll volunteer to help the other seniors. I, I guarantee we can get people for this.
So if there's.
She's going to tell us what we need to do to help you, Eric, and we'll make it happen.
Yeah. We'll get. That's a very good idea. Get a list and check them off. Go down to list and check them off.
You get a list, pick a day, we'll get people in there to help, get hop on the phones, whatever you want to do.
Okay. All right. Well, if we can do, if we can do that, and Eric, if you can, um, let us understand what, who you need assistance with and what we can do, I think we'll have enough people that will try to help this through because.
It looks, it looks like Kathy and Mike have been calling those people a lot.
Yes.
Okay, Eric.
I mean, look, we're not ignoring it. It's just a question of what the resources are. You know, and can you really go through and create an email for every single senior? You know, that you want to get vaccinated and then enter them into the van, get their personal information, enter them into the van system. Wait for vams to respond, call the individual, figure out what appointment they can make. I mean, it's not, you know.
It sounds like you've worked it all out. That's awesome.
Looks like, we looked at the logistics of doing that and just concluded that, you know, we don't have the resources to do that.
Okay.
Well, what about the phone option? What do you, you have to call a number and you just, you wait on the phone? Is, that's, that's the phone option?
So I'll, I'll go to someone's house with my mask on and I'll sit there with my cell phone ringing. And we'll figure it out. Give me one person I need to do. Let me figure out the first person.
Can we unmute Mike and Kathy? They're, they're chiming in. Can we unmute them and get them part in this conversation, please?
Yes, I agree. It's time we get them in on the conversation.
Is that okay?
Yeah, it's fine by me.
Amanda, can you make that happen?
I think I'm.
Can you hear it?
Hey, help us out. Tell us what's going on. What do you need? What do you, what is, what's going on?
Listen, Roberta and I are taking care of it. Please relax and stop talking about the same thing. We have 105 who have already been vaccinated. We have, in fact, we had two that went today. We have people that are going. We had a case today of a lady who has, uh, it won't do anything. That's reasonable. So we are helping her. I'm going on the van system. I had another lady today, her daughter, her daughter-in-law called me and I said to her, can you do this? Can you organize this for her? And I said.
Kathy, are you trying to tell us you have it covered? You got it covered, Kathy?
You do got it covered, Kathy.
I think so.
All right, we'll stop worrying about it.
Thank you.
Thank you Kathy for helping.
I just don't want to be 104th out of a.
Right, I don't either.
That looks really bad.
I think 105 out of 171 is a pretty good shot. I know it's not perfect and you're not going to get it perfect because there's people out there that said, no, we don't want it.
Okay.
Kathy, Kathy, if you have a need that comes up, you contact us and let us know. Okay?
We'll do that.
I mean, the reality is everyone, if, not everyone's going to want it. So we, you can't make people do something they don't want. But I, I'm confident that Kathy and/or Roberta will let us know what we can do.
We can just sneak up on people and give it to them. Get some camo gear. Let's go.
Thank you.
We're going to get to 100, 170. Let's go.
Eric, thank you very much.
Kathy, thank you. And just again, what Paul said, if you need something, let us know.
One last question, the sweeper that we purchased.
How many hours is on it?
Say it again.
How many hours are on the new sweeper we got?
Around 5,000, something like that.
Does it have a good stereo?
I don't know. I can't tell you what, what the status of the stereo is.
Hey, just from the size of this, how much material does it hold compared to the old sweeper?
Uh, it holds basically the same amount of material.
Okay.
The really nice thing about this is it puts the material in front of the sweeper. And then you can lift it up and drop it directly into a truck. The thing that sucked about the old one is you would drive up with the sweeper and then the stuff would dump out the bottom in a pile. And then you would have to come out with the loader or the backhoe and pick it up and put it in. So it was really, it took one extra body. Um, with this thing, you can go out and just park a truck. And then Jay can just go back and forth or whoever's driving it, dump it in the truck. And then when the truck is filled, you know, go take it down to the pit and dump it.
And the best part is we're using more salt now than, uh, treated salt than sand. So it'll last a lot longer.
With a little luck.
Okay. Um, let's see, let's, now we're done with our town administrators report. Old business discussed next upon following the alarm monitoring for town buildings.
Okay, so at this point I've got one full-blown solid quote and proposal for fixing up the alarm systems. And, uh, and what the monitoring costs are. Um, I have calls into two others. One guy is supposed to be out next week to measure and look at everything. So we're going to try to get at least three local, uh, dealers to give us the evaluations. Um, and then once we know what the costs are going to be, um, we'll go.
What did, what did that first one come in at, out of curiosity?
Uh, so, so depending on what options we choose. You know, somewhere around 10,000 to make the public works facility, uh, pretty much code compliant. And then, uh, it's, what, what they're proposing is using basically, instead of a landline for, for the notification system, using a cell phone based, a cell carrier based unit. Um, which is about 45 bucks a month as opposed to like 27 a month to monitor the landlines. But we're paying $37 a month for the phone lines and most of these systems take two. So the, the monitoring cost should pretty much be a wash. You know, if we go to the cellular activated ones, there's going to be some one-time, you know, programming fees. Um, the other big building that we got to deal with if we so choose is the museum. Uh, at one time had an actual fire alarm system, but the, the Burbank administration removed it. Because he didn't want to pay for the phone lines and they put a little home baked, home monitoring system on. Um, but it's really only got like one detector. Um, so. So that has to be addressed. That's, you know, a three to $4,000, you know, option if we choose to, to monitor that building. You know, so that's pretty much where we're at.
Did you get ahold of Bob Downer?
I left Bob a message. I have not, he has not returned my call.
Okay.
New business.
New business. Yes, I was sitting there thinking of, uh, something else, but we'll get to that later. Budget discussion. Uh, I know that we were scheduled to have a, uh, a budget meeting tonight. And, uh, our regular meeting la- on Monday, uh, do we want to schedule an additional budget meeting? Between now and the end of this month?
Certainly.
I, I, I personally don't think so. I think we're going to do our, I think we need to do our broad strokes on the budget. At our next budget meeting and kind of tidy it up and move it on to board of finance and let them, you know, we've already done, all the outliers. I think our biggest things right now are funds, right? Is that correct, Eric?
We still have some salary issues to deal with.
Yeah, but they're minor.
The major stuff is basically the funds.
Yeah.
Okay, so the other issue is, um, we do need to schedule a joint meeting in the board of finance and the board of selectmen to present our budget to them. So at some point in time, we'll want to do that, uh, maybe Tuesday, the second, or if we have to do one after Tuesday, the second, we'll do it.
Do we, do we need to do a joint? Isn't that really kind of, in the past, isn't that really kind of Eric or the, the town admin that presented?
I think with this budget, I think we should get in front of them and, uh, sit there. Because this is one of those budgets that we're trying to lay out some issues and some direction for the community. So I think we should, uh, invite our friends at the board of finance in and talk to them about what we're trying to do. And then hear them so that we can all be on the same page.
Exactly, yeah.
I second, I second Jeff's comments. I think that's a great idea.
I think it's an excellent idea. I just wanted to hear someone else say it.
Excellent idea.
I love your ideas.
Then, then as usual, I will not take credit for it.
So.
Great idea.
Oh Jeff, you take credit for it, Jeff.
So.
You're wearing that white hair.
What date are you proposing for that?
Uh, we'll sit there and determine it at our next budget meeting.
Okay. And at the next budget meeting, right now, we're going to schedule Ram. Um, the superintendent, uh, and the chair of the Ram Board of Ed and invite the board of finance. Is there anybody else you want to speak to directly at the next meeting? Do you want me to line anybody else up?
That'll be fine.
Okay.
To be clear, we're inviting the board of finance so that they can be part of the Ram conversation.
Correct.
Okay.
That budget meeting is the 16th? Eric?
Uh, yeah, our next budget meeting is 7:00 PM on the 16th. Oh, no, wait. Christ, I can't see that far. Uh, yeah, on the 16th.
Don't take the Lord's name in vain there, Eric.
What did you say, Adrian?
Keep it the Lord's name in vain. He shouldn't be saying it like that.
Okay. All right. So we're moving on to 11B, uh, the Donna, Donna Doiker settlement. The town, uh, the town's insurance company, uh, Karma is, uh, has reached a settlement with, uh, the previous tax collector in regards to the Jay Lindy sexual harassment lawsuit. We need to make a motion to accept that, uh, that agreement. The agreement is in the amount of $200,000. Um, that will be covered by Karma, the insurance company. Uh, it will have an impact on Andover eventually in our premiums. Um, but we're hoping that it's a minimal, but it will come down the road. So, uh, there is a motion that I'll actually make. I move to accept the proposed settlement between the town of Andover and Donna Doiker as presented by Attorney O'Vas.
Scaccio.
Scaccio.
Do we need to, do we need to use the terminology authorized cons- or consent to the? I think that was the word she used.
Say that one again?
She said we need to consent specifically.
Okay. Uh, I moved to consent to the proposed settlement between the town of Andover and Donna Doiker. As presented by, uh, the Attorney Vacchio on behalf of Karma.
Thank you.
Uh, Attorney O'Brien, before I move forward with that, is that acceptable?
Yes, it is, sir.
Okay. So Adrian, you, you seconded that?
I did.
Okay, discussion? For the record, and it's an exorbitant amount. Okay. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we move on. 11C Library and Mural vandalism request for the court statement. Um, the library board presented the, uh, Eric and myself, a, a statement that they would like submit to the court. I had told, uh, the library board representative that I will also send a, a cover letter related to that. When does that need to be submitted by?
Uh, pretty much right away at this point.
Yeah, it's coming up next week, yeah.
Next week? Okay, so, um, has, has everybody read that letter?
Yes.
And we have a problem with the letter?
I wouldn't let them get accelerated rehabilitation personally.
The library board wants to sit there and be generous to the individual that actually stepped up and took some responsibility for the vandalism. So I don't have a problem with it.
They don't want to ruin the kids' life.
Yeah, they're not giving the other two any breaks, so that's fine. So I think as a board or as a, you know, as a representative for the town, I have no problem submitting a, a short cover letter supporting the request. Anybody on this board have a problem with that?
No. No, seems reasonable.
Okay.
No.
Um, 11D is, uh, disposition of old equipment. Eric's already talked about that. Um, does anyone have a problem with the list or how we're going about it? Or they think it should be done in a different way? Scott, Adrian, do you have any, any requests and how they do it?
Oh, get rid of it.
Adrian, besides wanting to buy half of it, do you have any other problems with it?
Uh, no, I think, uh, I think Richie Brothers is kind of really the only game in town for those bigger things. And, um, yeah, I, uh, I, I think we also, for the sake of expediency, it might be, I, I and I already told Eric to maybe get a number from Koots. We also maybe asked Jay to just take a quick look and see if it's worth parting out the 550 instead of selling it whole with the plow installed. We may make more money by pulling the plow off, selling the body or selling, selling the body, plow and, and truck separately.
Okay.
They're not going to give you anything for it. Koots.
Uh, I would disagree with that statement. I've sold a couple of things to them and, and felt like the number was pretty fair.
But, but the truck itself is in very good condition.
Yeah, yeah. And I, I don't think the plow's in bad shape either, so.
Right. You know, so it's be sensible to keep the plow.
Uh, I did talk to Eric about that, about whether it would be worth it to transfer the body and stuff to a new piece of equipment. It just depends what the numbers are. He's going to look into that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, Eric's trying to cover all the bases. I gave him a couple of places to look into so we can get a little better pricing number too, maybe.
Yeah, that's why I'm saying we're not, I don't want to make any decision on this until we, you know, have a much better idea of what all our options are.
Um, yep.
Right now, all we know is all the options are kind of bad. Um, you know.
Okay. 11E is the agreement between the town of Hebron and the town of Andover for turf management or management of the facility at Long Hill, the ball field at Long Hill. Veterans Memorial Field. Uh, has everyone had a chance to look at that agreement? Eric, I would just ask you, what's the increase in costs on that from year to year?
Uh, so the increase in cost this year is, as far as I could tell, isn't really any. But there is, but they do open it up so that in previ- in, in subsequent years. Basically, it's a two-year contract, but with the understanding that they will come back with a budget number for next year at some point. Um, that we will have to re-agree to.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Scott, since you are the most involved in that, do you have any problem with, uh, the service they've been providing?
No, I think it's very good. Very happy with them.
And Dennis?
Professional.
Yes, I reviewed the agreement. It's very, it's exact, almost exactly the same except for cost. To the same agreement I reviewed and approved in 2018. So I just wanted to let you know that I approve of it as your attorney.
All right. Thank you very much. I know that last year, actually over the last few years, Scott has worked incredibly hard to sit there and, and work with, uh, uh, Rich Clark over at Hebron to make that, uh, irrigation system work properly and, uh, you know, I believe, I think the last thing that Scott told me is that uh, he finally got it working correctly and no one had to sit there and babysit the system. So if that is accurate, Scott, give me a a yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
No more marriage to the, no more marriage to the irrigation.
What are you gonna do with all your free time, Scott?
Yeah, 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 I'm going across the street.
Going across the street, that's right. Scott's gonna make a dent on a uh, wall field for Dennis, Attorney O'Brien's girl softball.
Right, exactly. I want to see.
I'm excited to support uh, that field as a girl softball field.
Me too.
Me too.
Right. All right, um. Is there anything else? Do we need to approve that agreement?
Remember, read the motion, Eric?
I don't know if there was a motion, is there?
Yeah, there was.
Yeah.
I motioned to authorize the town administrator to sign the turf management agreement between the town of Hebron Parks Recreation and the town of Andover. On.
Just, you're gonna, you you're you're.
That's it, yeah.
Paul, I guess I'll second it. Paul's unmute. I'll second that.
All right.
Further discussion? Yeah. Further discussion? Anybody? No? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed?
Jeff, you're opposed. I'm and I, I was just late, I was late to the game.
Late to the game, all right. It's the Florida connection.
It's it's delayed. The hearing aid's not kicking in.
Delayed, yes, yes. Uh, new business eleven F, the Chamberlain Pond Cleanup. Eric?
So Mr. Murray asked me to put this on. Uh, there was some residents that indicated that they want us to create them a skating pond. Um, you know, various insundry proposals were floated on how to do that. Uh.
What does insundry mean?
Uh.
It's all right, it's a good word. Let's keep going. What what are we gonna do?
So I know the Conservation Commission submitted a letter to the board today, but frankly, I haven't even read it, so I don't know what the contents of the letter are. I suspect the Wetlands Commission uh, would have a cow if you tried to clear uh the brush around the pond, but I don't know for sure. It would certainly take a wetlands application because it's absolutely in the upland review area.
Can we check with the Burning Official? Maybe we could just burn it?
Yeah.
All right, let's let's get serious for a minute. I just, I talked to the Conservation Commission. I had Mike Palazzi and Kerry Crompton there, and they had no issue um, with the, and they stated that in the letter with with clearing. There's a bunch of deadfall that's into the pond and a bunch of overhanging brush. They don't mind if we trim. Um, they also did a similar project with some clearing uh, with approval of inland wetlands. But we haven't had approval yet. Um, the reason I put this on the agenda was to um, make sure the Selectmen, A, know about it and um B, that we, that if we trim any brush, um, it would be approval to public, if we pile it, that public works come at some point and 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 collect it and take it to the brush pile.
Where's the pond that we're talking about?
The one on three sixteen, the fire pond.
Okay, fire pond.
So, I mean, people have skated on it in the past. It's just become overgrown. And instead of, instead of bringing in a temporary pond or putting in dikes and flooding an area down at the ball field, because, I mean, the pond already exists. If it if it freezes, um it's good, we can skate on it. If not, um, I mean, if the dice is bad or if it's got snow on it, we can even you know, contact the fire department, see if they can suck, you know, put a suction line on the the fire, um, you know, the the pipe there and and reflood the the pond. And basically draw from the bottom and put a new layer of ice on the top. So it just seems like it's a, it's just using existing resources without having to spend a lot of money.
So who who wants to do this?
There was just, there was just a lot of conversation about having a skating area in town and um, you know, Jeribadi Pond is um, state-owned. The the lake fall, pretty much falls under Alpoa. And um, there's really no other really op- option in that that pond is town-owned, so.
You know, who might be someone who would take this and run with it? Scott Warren.
Okay.
I know him and his, him and his friends used to skate over there.
I used to skate there. I used, I used to personally skate there when I was a kid.
No, I'm serious. Why are you laughing, Scott?
Because, do you know?
We'll have the resident state trooper help him out. How about that, huh?
Yeah, I think it would be an ironic twist that he got his wish, don't you think? I think this is great.
I don't think we need to even talk about it. It it's a great idea. Let's move forward with it. If if there's group of residents and Scott is willing to sit there and participate, that's great. If Scott's not willing to participate, let's sit there and and move forward with it. It's a you know, the only thing I would sit there and say is is this is the first year in a long time that we've had consistent cold weather to free any body of water in this town, so.
Correct.
Um.
That's one of the keys here, though, Jeff. If you're gonna cut the brush, you gotta use the ice, so you gotta get on it right now.
I mean, it's, yeah, it's advantageous to get on the ice right now to get to the, to get to the brush to get it off of there.
Okay.
I would say I've skated Jeribadi Pond at least one day the last four years. There's ice here.
You know, you can't, you can't get your boat out there, so what do you, what are you even talking about?
So the issue is, the issue is doing maintenance. The issue is, the issue would be reflooding it and clearing snow. Like, if we had people go on and clear snow, it's easier that it's a town-owned parcel than a state-owned parcel.
Sure, then let's do it, so.
So do we have the support of the Selectmen? Um, um, if if Illinois Owens okay's it, that's our, that's our last hurdle.
Yes.
Honestly, honestly, I'm not particularly in favor of it. I mean, I don't see why the town gets involved with something on a small pond when you already have the lake and you already have Jeribadi Pond, you know, that are good bodies of water to skate on.
And thank God you don't have a vote. Bah humbug, you know.
Exactly.
Situation. You know, it's a, it's a potential public resource, and if you could sit there and make that skateable and make it acceptable for residents to come down there, I think it'd be a wonderful thing.
It's got, it's got good parking. It's just, it's, it's just, you know, if people want to bring their kids down in to skate, it's just a resource we can, we can leverage, that's all.
And if a resident wants to come down there and play a little hockey and and sit in a parking lot after the the hockey game, good for them as well.
They're on their own with the trooper.
That's right. So does any of the other members of the Board of Selectmen have a problem with us? I mean, the only thing we were really asking for the town to do in Eric's purview is potentially pick up brush.
Correct.
Yeah, we can, I I mean, the hard part is just getting wetlands approval.
Yeah, I mean, we're in the process. I don't know if we can unmute Mike and Kathy, but I don't know what Mike is, Mike.
Yes, we can.
Yeah, it's, I'm just waiting for uh, Megan Lowly to get back to me. I she, I've contacted her. And uh, we'll see what happens. Because we're not gonna cut anything, no roots near it. We're just gonna trim the uh, trees down that are bent over and dipping into it.
Right.
And uh, the stuff that's on there, you know, we went over that with Jeff. We can probably cut some of the stuff up, all those iced, and get the roots that are sticking up there from a dead tree or something. We can cut that off so it's flush with the ice at least. And and maybe a little bit below, you know? That's all work party stuff, you know?
Mike, Mike, and Mike, you've done similar cleanups in the past, right, with Illinois Owens' approval?
Yeah, yes, yeah, we did the other side of that, where the stream goes in to feed it and and on the, on the very edge of it, you know? And.
And this is similar work?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and then Jeff, I'm assuming that you'll sit there and coordinate with the fire department if you need anything.
Yeah, we just, we just have to get it, you know, cleared to 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 make it skateable, and then we'll we'll address that when I.
Jeff, uh, I I talked to Scott real quick. He said if you call him, he will help out and he may be able to get you some bodies too.
Got.
Warren.
Okay, okay. I I just think it's a win-win for the town. It's just another thing we can, you know, have for.
It is.
Utilize our resources.
Uh, it's the same reason why the the, you know, if we could, you know, the lake is, the lake, Andover Lake is a resource. I know it's not a town resource, but it is a resource. People are out there hiking and doing everything. We should support that any way we possibly can. Um, and what Jeff is doing is a town piece of property, and I think it's I think it's a great thing. Maybe even in the future, we should sit there and think about doing a fire pit and letting people have parties there. Right, Eric?
Not go there right now.
All right, okay.
Wow.
So, so let's move on to our next thing. Um, we have on our agenda eleven G, May elections.
So as most of you have gotten from the Andover Democratic Town Committee, they would like consideration for changing elections from May until November, which obviously requires a change to the charter, so it's neither a simple nor a short uh, thing to do. What I had suggested is the fastest thing they could do, or we could do, is put a non-binding question on uh, when we go to the next vote for May elections that would say, are you in favor of a change to fall elections? And at least understand whether people want to do it before we go down the process of uh, hi- you know, putting together a uh, commission to review the charter. And Dennis can give you chapter and verse about exactly what has to happen to do that.
Are we gonna do that for all of the things we're gonna put on the charter?
Well, no, Adrian, um, let's uh, let's just have Attorney O'Brien verify in a not chapter and verse. Attorney O'Brien, in in a, in a reasonable short synopsis, is what Eric said accurate?
I haven't used up all my time yet. Anyway, um, yeah, Eric, what Eric said is absolutely accurate. It's a charter matter. It's uh, you have a charter, a charter section two oh three that requires elections to be held in May. In order to change that, you would need a charter revision. You could, you know, the, you know, I just want to give you a little ancient history, but this was on the ballot that for a change about ten years ago. And it failed along with the rest of the charter. It was proposed that time, and I I I wrote the section and it's all ready. I could just put it out right now. What you could do is change the charter uh, to make it a uh uh, November election. If you could do it in the uh gubernatorial election of two thousand and twenty-two. And then it would become effective the following year. The good news for all of you on the Board of Selectmen is that your terms would be slightly extended because you wouldn't be running for reelection if you run.
And I, and I. Say that's good news?
And of course, we all hope you do. We all hope you do. And I hope I'm around to see it. And and uh, if you do run, um you you would, your your terms would have to be extended until uh, January one of uh, two thousand and twenty-four.
Okay.
Otherwise, they would, you know, they would terminate sooner because you.
I'm sure, I'm sure that would be no problem for for Paula or Scott or or Jeff. Adrian and I are definitely will not get support on on the extension of our terms. So.
In any event, uh, you have the option of of putting in a charter change. Uh, next year, you have plenty of time. You could have panel a charter commission, uh you know, after the, uh, well, anytime you want, because you have once the Charter Commission comes up with its final report and it's approved by the Board of Selectmen, uh, you have fifteen months in which to put it on the ballot. So you could real- very easily do it relatively soon. Get it on the ballot um, for the two thousand and twenty um, gubernatorial election. If you try to do a charter revision at any time other than a a uh, a state election or or your May election, uh, in order to pass it, you have to have fifteen percent vote in favor of it. If you do it at a basic referendum, it's, I've never heard of anybody passing it that way. So the only way to do it would be in November of twenty twenty-two, when the next gubernatorial election is scheduled, then I would be very happy to help you in that regard, because I've worked on many of those things.
Can I ask a structural question about this?
Sure.
So, as you know, we've, we've, we had a charter revision that passed and a charter revision that didn't. And one, a charter commission that didn't get very far, so.
That's right.
If this were to be put on, are we allowed when a charter cha- when charter changes are put out to have certain things pulled aside? So like, could we have a charter change that encompass, say, everything except for this or everything except for this one other thing and have those questions voted on separately for charter changes?
Yeah, the questions are normally broken down into separate questions. We had a charter revision on our ballot here in Wyndham this past uh, fall, and uh, we had eight questions, seven passed. Um, I'm proud to say I was chairman of that commission. And uh, but in any, in any event, yes, uh, but once you impanel a charter commission, you can give them a charge, say, you know, we want, uh, we want you to put on there something about changing the election cycle from May to November.
Yeah.
They still can do whatever they want. They can add they can add all the issues they want to. Of course, you can give them, you know, a month to finish. You can give them ten months to finish. So you have some control over them, and then it it comes back to you and you have to approve what they do.
Okay. You know, I I I hope that we can do better than, you know, that's seven out of eight, but my my bigger thing is that uh, no, my bigger thing is that I I know there has been lots of discussion about this in the past. And unfortunately, there is also an undercurrent of folks that disagree with it because they feel like they're gonna lose their their space in the paper, because we're a small town. You know, right now, with May elections, you know, we're the only people talking about elections, so we get a little bit of play in the letters to the editor and what have you. Their concern was if we switch to November, oh my God, you know, we're gonna get swapped by these bigger towns, so.
Um, well, I'm in favor of that. I personally, it's not my call, but I'm the one who convinced the Charter Commission ten months, ten years ago to put that in the, in the package.
Well, listen, I mean, I know this, you know, as the Palazis pointed out in the in the chat, that that the Secretary of State really wants this to happen, because we're one of only four towns that still have this, so. Um, I get it. I just want to make sure that we don't risk charter issues, other issues that need to happen with this kind of wrapped up in it, that's all.
So you can separate them all out and they're voted on individually.
Seems pretty simple, Adrian. He, Dennis has got it all written out already.
I have, I have that all written out already, that item and uh, a number of others, and you know, just ask me and uh, I'm available and I love.
Okay, so, so our issue as a board, and really not at this meeting, is to determine when and if we want to do a charter revision and the issues that we want to sit there and see addressed, so.
Somewhere down the road. I think it's a good idea. I'm glad it came up. Uh, I don't know, putting it on the agenda, putting it on the ballot for May as an advisory referendum. I mean, you could do that. You, there's probably enough time. You'd have to check with the Secretary of State.
Why?
But, you know, where would that get you? I don't know.
Yeah.
You got a low turnout, you're not gonna know mu- learn much anyway. And you will get a low turnout this year because you don't have much on the ballot, right? You, the Board of Selectmen's not on the ballot this.
You're being presumptive.
Uh, no, I'm being, I'm, I'm giving you the benefit of my forty years of experience and.
We have three positions for the Board of Education, Earl.
You do? That'll bring out some people, but.
Seven out of eight, seven out of eight, that's all I'm saying.
As your Democratic Party Chairman pointed out in that memo that I saw that's on the uh, I I think you have it, it uh, your turnouts in uh, in May are pretty, pretty poor.
Did you advisor on that? Is this, is that conflicting?
No.
Okay.
I'm not, no, I didn't.
I mean, if we're gonna do it, we should just do it. I don't think we should make it as a question, because every time you put a question on, people think it's actually they're voting on the charter. So I think we just put the question up and let people vote yes or no.
No, because it's gonna, I think it confuses people because they're gonna think that it mean, it it's gonna make the change.
Okay, so, so let's, let's go back, but but, okay. We're not gonna, I I I don't recommend putting it up simply because we normally have low turnout at that point in time anyway, so it's the same people that would not want to vote on it. It was the reason why the last, the only time the charter since I've been involved, a charter proposal has passed, it was because we were at the November election.
Right.
A lot of turnout, and we had a lot of people coming in, and we had a lot of different views and opinions, and and it was more uh, representative of the total community rather than a small selection of the community. So, I mean.
I agree with you, Jeff. I agree, I agree with that statement.
Very well, very well said, Jeff.
Personally, I I sit there and think you know, o- out of a lot of things that have been going around like now, I may not agree with a lot of them, but that's one of them that I agree with. It is, is a November election would be better for our community. And it would, it would cut down on our expenses and it would make things a little bit simpler for.
Oh, it's, it's, it, it makes so many other things, because the the deadlines to pick candidates at this point are are so early in the, in the prize, it's just a mess. So I, I mean, I agree with it as well. I don't think we need a referendum even a non-binding one to answer it. I think we just need to get through this budget cycle and then put a charter commission together and and start you know, trucking through some of these issues, so.
I think that would be very.
I think that would be very wise, uh if that's.
Okay, and I think that is something that we as a board should look to do, and I agree with that, and so.
Well, I think it's, I I I thought that it was already kind of on our radar.
It it has been, but since, you know, it is, it is not a priority as right now. We haven't announced to anyone when or if we're going to do it, but uh has there been discussion among members of this board whether we need to do that? Answer is yes. And should we doing a charter revision? Yes. I mean, we're required to do a charter revision. How often, Dennis?
Well, I don't, I don't know.
Do a committee, how often?
You're not, you're not required to do it. You're some some charters, I don't know if yours does, requires you to just look at it every five years.
Yeah, every five years you have to look at it. You don't actually have to do anything.
That's the same, that, yeah, that's that's pretty standard in charters, and and I wasn't aware that it was.
Well, this this board has not sat there and done a charter revision or authorized a charter revision or authorized a committee to look at the charter revision. So before we're done with our four years, we will absolutely do that, and hopefully that will be one of the issues that's on uh a revised charter that the community could vote on. And Adrian is actually right. We can't put it up all or nothing. We have to put it up piecemeal and say, these are the things we'd like to do. Do you agree with this? Do you agree with this? Do you agree with this? Do you agree with this?
That's right.
I mean, I don't know the answer to this. Can someone enlighten me as to what happened with the last Charter Commission? I I know there was one in pa- you know, in panel, I remember going to a couple of meetings to to give my own thoughts.
But it's a couple of people leave town and they never, they didn't make their deadline. And then um, and then you uh you, on my recommendation, you uh you uh, do you?
Just banned it, um.
Disbanded, that's right. I was, I couldn't find the right word.
Previous Board of Selectmen empowered it, and this Board of Selectmen ended.
That's right, you did it.
Just like most things, this Board of Selectmen tries to do things.
No, I just wasn't sure what, why it had got bogged down, that's all.
Two, two, two key members left town, uh they had uh they had, they couldn't raise a quorum for some of the meetings, some people were less active than others. Uh, it just died for lack of uh participation.
And that. So we're gonna move forward with that. We will do it after uh probably the cycle, probably really after this election, to be really honest, if you'd like to know my opinion and my timing. Uh, we should start thinking about it, so if any of the members have anything they'd like to see changed, uh we should start thinking about it. Uh, we're gonna move on to item twelve is approval of minute meetings. Uh, we have uh approval of the meetings for the Monday, January eleventh, regular meeting. We have uh approval for the Tuesday, January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one special meeting bu- budget workshop. The Tuesday, January twenty-sixth. Was it a Tuesday or Wednesday? Um, okay, we'll go with the not, we'll go with these dates, Tuesday, January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty special uh budget uh workshop minutes, and did we actually meet on the second? I'm asking the board here. I I don't remember that.
What day?
Took the second.
Yes, we did, I believe. That was the when we had, isn't that when we had Andover? Uh, was that when you had Valerie?
Yep, yep.
Valerie was on the second, not the twenty-sixth, okay?
Yep.
Tuesday, February second, twenty twenty special meeting. I mean, because, okay, so this is the eighth. That's why I'm having a confusion. I'm having a senior moment. Dennis, forgive me on that one. My hair is gray. My hair is gray.
Um, I tried to fake it anyway.
This last week has been a a little bit uh confusing for the days. So February, Tuesday, February second. So we have four meeting uh minutes that we have to approve. Does anyone want to make a motion to approve all those minutes?
I would motion to approve all those minutes.
Someone want a second then?
Wait, are you saying that Valerie was on the second?
I thought she was on the twenty-sixth.
Yeah, she wasn't on the second.
Sure. Oh, the second was the one we uh.
No, she wasn't on the second because I met with her on, at the end of that week at the, on the twenty-ninth.
You're correct, you're correct.
So.
You're correct.
All right, I just wanted to clarify.
Okay, who's seconding Scott's motion? I'm seconding Scott's motion to approve the minutes. Uh, all those in favor, further discussion on the minutes? Anybody want to have any corrections, any changes, anything, nothing? All those in favor? I.
I.
Okay, thank you. Um the Finance Department uh report is in our package. Does anyone have any specific questions they'd like to ask Eric about or talk to Eric about? Eric, are there any specific areas that you want us to to focus on or things that you find is a problem on any of those reports?
Not at this meeting, no.
Okay. All right. Okay, fourteen, item fourteen is the budget appropriation transfers and over expenditure requests. Eric, do we have any for this meeting?
Nothing for this meeting.
Okay. Tax collector report and refund requests. Do we have anything for this meeting?
Uh, we have two. Um, they're in your motions. Uh, one is four hundred and twelve dollars and nineteen cents to Lisa Stratton, and one is six hundred and fifty-one dollars and forty-nine cents to the Porsche leasing. Uh those are both vehicle related.
Okay, both excess payment requests, refunds. So would someone like to make a motion to accept those?
I read those motions.
Yep, I'm pulling that up right now. Uh where are they?
Number fifteen on the motion sheet.
Thank you, I'm scrolling down here. I motion to approve the refund of excess payment in the amount of four hundred and twelve dollars, nineteen cents to Lisa Stratton. I motion to approve the refund of excess payment in the amount of six hundred and fifty-nine, fifty-one dollars, forty-nine cents to Porsche leasing, because the vehicle was sold.
I second.
Okay. All further discussion, no discussion, all those in favor? I.
I.
It pains me to vote yes on those, by the way. The Assessor's Report, Eric, where are we on the Revaluation Services?
So as according to John, as of this week, we are a hundred percent through with the uh walkthrough, uh the initial walkthrough of the properties.
Um, you said a hundred percent?
That's what he told me. Told me they had done the first evaluation of all the properties.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions related to the Assessor's Department?
I mean, obviously, it's still ongoing. It's not, you know.
So it's not a hundred percent.
Well, the initial, you know, uh update of the Assessor's cards is a hundred percent. Now it goes off to their central location, all the data entry gets done, they all get put into the system. Um, so that's kind of the next step. John said that usually takes him at least a month to get them all actually physically updated.
Okay. All right, uh departmental reports, item seventeen. Eric, are there any specific reports you want to call on to the board?
No, not really. They're all there.
All right, does anyone have any questions related to any of the departmental reports?
Oh, the filing cabinet, it's up at the dump transfer station.
What about them?
Yeah, what, where'd they come from?
Uh, they've been in the Public Works cold storage facility for the last fifteen years.
Oh. So you saw a nice pieces, nice clean pieces of cement up there, and you wanted to cover it with old filing cabinets?
No, I mean, you know, the the deal is, we offered it to the public for a short period of time, and then whatever people don't want is going straight to John's scrapyard.
Good.
But since a a good filing cabinet is worth a lot more money than its weight in scrap.
Yeah.
Residents want it, I'd rather give it to them than get a couple dollars apiece or a buck apiece for it in scrap.
Did you put a sign out there or anything?
Uh, we've put it on the community alerts and on the town's Facebook page.
Can I, can I, can I, I I know it's out there, and I will say the one frustration I have is that so I did hear a couple complaints already about people saying that they were gonna take a cabinet and they were told certain ones were reserved. We should not be reserving. It's first come, first served. They either grab them or they don't.
Right, because they'll they'll be sitting there.
Right, and so we need to stop the the, we're gonna hold things for people. They either grab them or they're gone. We can't be holding that stuff.
The only time I I saw something up there with a hold tag was somebody who had tagged it on a Saturday and put very specifically, I will pick this up next Wednesday when the transfer station is open, and he had his name on it. So that I wasn't too concerned about.
Okay.
I haven't gone in and looked at there in the last week and seen what people put on the cabinets.
I did look Wednesday. I I know it was there on Saturday.
Would you put a sign on it, Eric, that say that they're free?
Uh, I didn't put a sign on there personally, no. Um, I mean, no.
Okay, so first come, first served. Get them the heck out of there.
Yep.
Get them out of here.
Are you gonna get me on the Ethics Commission if I go down and grab them?
You go take them. You have the equipment. You go put them on your property. No one will ever see them, probably not even the Assessor's office.
Right.
So.
Their personal use anyways, so.
Absolutely, yeah. So.
We're gonna, I think we're gonna see Adrian on Horder soon.
We're done with uh seventeen.
I was gonna invite you over. It's the, and that they're, they make good target practice.
Okay.
I am.
Eighteen, correspondence. Adrian, is there any correspond- uh Adrian, uh Eric, any correspondence that we need to know?
Uh, no.
Oh, all right, we're at uh the time in our meeting with for public speak. Let's go through who, oh, before we get to public speak, I I I apologize. You know, I I'd be remiss if we didn't thank Cindy Murray for her service to the Board of Education. Jeff, we're hoping that you can sit there and relay the Board of it, Board of Selectmen's thankfulness for her service as a volunteer to the community and serving on that board. Uh, we do understand it's been difficult and trying time, and we appreciate all of her hard work.
Yeah, we hope everything's okay with her.
Yeah.
Everything is fine. I will relay the message.
All right.
Um, and we have an opening on the Ethics Commission.
Thank you.
Uh, we we are a funny board. I'll tell you, a funny, funny, funny board.
The only way I'm getting through this.
Yes, I agree with you. Okay, um, so we're gonna open this up to uh public speak, and we're gonna start with Ann, no, Diane Grunier. You are first on my board. You know, it almost feels like Hollywood Squares, to be right honest, so I'm gonna go with a circle, uh, you know, Diane Grunier.
The Brady Bunch.
Yes.
Okay, um, yes, thank you. Um, a- as you probably know, um, I've been in severe lockdown with this COVID thing, worried, worried. I'm such an old lady, but I'm not seventy-five, so I have not been able to register to get my shot um until this week. They have opened it up, but I have been watching it carefully. A lot of my friends have signed up. And um as Eric said, it has been a nightmare trying to do it by telephone. Um, it's even worse trying to do it um on the computer. Um, I'm somewhat computer savvy, and I was having a hard time with it. So I did hear that the governor has ordered more phone, phone.
Yeah, that was supposed, that should be in effect already.
Yes, I called in this week because they've opened it up for people over sixty-five, and it was easy peasy. Um, I called and they, I got the the recording that says, you know, because of um big volume, you know, blah, 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 leave a message and they'll call back within twenty-four hours. Yeah, right, I knew that was uh, you know. But they did call back within twenty-four hours. Um, I had some special request kind of things that they were able to do for me that I I couldn't manage on the um, on the the um, the website things, and like I say, it went very easy, and I recommend that the seniors um make make the call. Um, do you guys want the telephone numbers? The Palazis aren't still on there?
Diane, are you gonna, are you gonna get your shot while wearing the costume?
Mrs. Claus didn't need to get the shot, you know, the the COVID did not go up to the North Pole.
Doesn't survive in the cold, good to know.
Be between that, and it's a pretty closed community, um, and Santa has been locked down as well. Um, but but here in Andover, like I say, I still have Peapod delivering my food. My big trip every week is to the dump, and we go the long way. Um, but now that I, you know, they've opened it up to over sixty-five, like I say, I did find the the telephone call was very easy, very polite, um, and it was not, not a problem at all.
Right.
Anne, Anne Kremay's making me dizzy over there.
Thank you very much for that information, Diane. We pre- greatly appreciate it. All right, anything else that you need to say to us, Diane?
No, that would probably be it.
All right, you're good, thank you.
Well, I guess I will, I will thank you for um um taking care of the uh hooligans from the library mural and uh sending off something for that, that we appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, no problem. Uh, Anne Kremay? You're good, okay. Uh, Joanne Ebert.
We're walking around, Anne.
No, she said she shook her head. I got, I got that message. It was a.
No, it's the walking around. I'm getting dizzy.
Well, the phone, you know, she's got two phones going. She's got one in her hand here and the other in her ear, and like, I mean, who who still has a wall phone, uh besides my eighty-nine-year-old mother?
Hey, 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 apparently the Kremays have one.
All right, we'll go on. Jo- Joanne Ebert, let's go.
Bye, thank you.
You're good? All right, excellent. Uh, Amanda, would you like to participate?
I'm all set, but thank you for including me.
All right. Uh, Dennis, since you're you're not a member, do you have anything you want to say?
Well, I I just want to say that I did get my first vaccine shot a few weeks ago, and I, but I had a hell of a time scheduling it, and I can relate to all the people who had difficulty. It was very difficult, but I'm, my next shot is scheduled for next Friday.
Well, planning low on Saturday. Sometimes the second shot's a little rough.
Already warned me about.
Late arrival.
Adrian's already warned, I have one more thing. The Ethics, the Ethics uh order that. All right, I'm done, I guess.
No, you weren't done.
The Ethics Ordinance that was mentioned by this gentleman from the Democratic Town Committee was, it was done before my time in Andover, I think, or it was done without my knowledge. It's terrible. It's 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 ver- very poorly done, and I submitted to this uh board or a previous one a a a another version of that, and it was never acted on. I just wanted to bring that out, because it is, I I have, I have it. It's available, it's excellent. If you really want to have an Ethics Commission, um, it's what, it's it's based on one I wrote in Mansfield. It took uh, went through about twenty drafts.
All right, Dennis, if you could forward that to us, that would be great.
I will be happy to do that, you know that.
Thank you. And and last but not least, Shannon Loudon has joined us at the end of our meeting for public speak. Shannon, would you like to say anything?
No, I'll have to review this. Um, hopefully, it looks like you're recording it, so I'll review what happened tonight. Um, I just wanted to publicly acknowledge um Cindy's resignation, because I saw it on your agenda, and also to uh say on your agenda that I'd seen May elections. Um, so I'll see what you all said about it and uh hope that you don't schedule another meeting on the same night as my Board of Education meeting in the future. Thank you.
Shannon, we're gonna move elections to June. I think that's much better.
Sounds great. Thank you for letting me know that.
Okay, and and by the way, we did record the meeting. Thank you. Um, uh.
I see that, thank you.
Any Board of Selectmen members want to say anything uh in the end?
Nope.
No? Okay, uh then I'll make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
Seconded.
All right, all those in favor? I, oh, wait, 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 wait. Adrian's birthday was February.
Oh, no, no.
Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday, dear Adrian. Happy Birthday to you.
That's all suck. Thank you, though.
Are you one? Are you two?
Bye.
Thank you for recording that, Eric. Have a nice night.
Good night.